Third one. E is the 973, prime or composite? E is the 973, prime or composite? Listen carefully sir. In the previous question we got an even number. Any even number other than two, it is an composite number. But given question is 973. I told you, for you to check whether a number is a prime number or composite number, there are 237 rules are there. So the next rule we use is based on the concept of A power N plus R minus B power N concept. A power N plus R minus B power N concept. First key point, A square minus B square can be written as A minus B into A plus B. A cube minus B cube can be written as A minus B into A square plus AB plus B square. A square plus AB plus B square. Very, very important key point. A square minus B square, 2E is an even number. A cube minus B cube, 3 is an odd number. A power N minus B power N is always divisible by... A power N minus B power N is always divisible by A minus B. If N is a natural number, please write down this. This can be used in multiple subtopics in number system. I can use this in reminders, I can use it in factors and multiples. I can use it in... To eliminate few answer options. A power N minus B power N is always divisible by A minus B if N is a natural number. If N is a natural number. Next important key point. A cube plus B cube. A cube plus B cube can be written as A plus B into A square minus AB plus B square. A square minus AB plus B square. Here, N, 3 is an odd number. Another important key point. A power N plus B power N is always divisible by... A power N plus B power N is always divisible by A plus B. Is always divisible by A plus B if N is an odd number. If N is an odd number. Please make a note of these two important key points. These two important key points. Make a note sir. A power N minus B power N is always divisible by A minus B if N is a natural number. A power N plus B power N is always divisible by A plus B if N is an odd number. These is one of the rules which will help us to find out whether a number is a prime number or a composite number. Prime number or a composite number. Now see, how am I going to solve this question? E is the 973, prime or composite? Given question 973, it is an odd number. Can I write 973 as 1000 minus 27? Definitely yes. 1000 minus 27 is 973. 1000 can be written as 10 cube. 27 can be written as 3 cube. A power N minus B power N is always divisible by A minus B. That means 973, it is divisible by 10 minus 37. 10 minus 3, 7. Any number which is divisible by 7 will be a composite number. Except 7, there is no number which is a multiple of 7 and a composite number. See, 973, if it is a, if it is a prime number, it should have only 2 factors. 1 and 973. If 973 is a prime number, it should have only 2 factors. 1 and 973. Anything beyond 1 and 973, the number will become a composite number. The number will become a composite number. Another rule to find out whether a number is a prime or composite. A power N plus R minus B power N concept. 973, if the given number is an odd number, try to check whether you can write it as A power N minus B power N. 1000 is 10 cube, 27 is 3 cube. A power N minus B power N, it is always divisible by A minus B if N is a natural number. A minus B if N is a natural number. Another example. 1 followed by 5 zeros ending with 1. 1 followed by 5 zeros ending with 1. Prime or composite? 1 followed by 5 zeros ending with 1. Check whether this number is a prime or a composite number. Check whether this number is a prime or composite number. Now see, again this number is an odd number. So first you will check whether the number is an odd or even. If it is an even number beyond 2, then definitely it is a composite number. If it is an odd number. Another rule is to do like this. This can be written as 10 power 6 plus 1. Yes or no? 10 power, 10 square is 1 followed by 2 zeros. 10 power 6 is 1 followed by 10, 6 zeros plus 1. 10 power 6 plus 1. This can be written as 10 square whole cube plus 1 whole cube. 10 square whole cube plus 1 whole cube. A power N plus B power N, it is always divisible by A plus B if N is an odd number. 3 is an odd number, so it is divisible by 101. If this number is a prime number, it should have only 2 distinct factors. 1 and the given number. But I got another factor 101, then the number is called a definitely a composite number. Then the number is a composite number. Crystal clear clarity on every possible model. Every possible concept driven by problems, we are going to discuss. We will spend a lot of extra time, but if we take up a topic, we will discuss comprehensively so that no student of mine gets a doubt when he is referring to any book of his choice while preparing for CAT examination. 1 followed by 5 zeros ending with 1. 10 power 6 plus 1. 10 square whole cube plus 1 whole cube. A power N plus B power N, it is always divisible by A plus B if N is an odd number. This type, one example, this type, one example. I hope the idea it is clear. Next one. Check whether 143, it is a prime or composite? Check whether 143, it is a prime or concept? In our textbooks, in our local textbooks, there is a concept to check whether a number is a, there is a concept to check whether a number is a prime or concept, composite? In our textbook, this concept is there. For smaller numbers, this might be useful. As the number of digits increases, then these rule might probably make your life miserable while solving that problem. How to check whether a number is a prime or a concept? But before I discuss that concept, let me take an example. Let me take an example, 12. Let me write down all the factors of 12. All the factors of 12. 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 12. 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 12. Am I right? 1 into 12 is 12, 2 into 6 is 12, 3 into 4 it is also 12. Now, see here. 12 lies between 12. Now if you see 12, now I will put a... 12 lies between 9 and 16, am I right? So I will put a line here. I will put a line here. I will tell you why am I keeping that line? I am keeping that line. Now see, if a number is divisible by 2. 4, 4 is a derivative of 2. If a number is divisible by 6, it is also divisible by 3, yes or no? If a number is divisible by 12, it is divisible by 4 and 3. If a number is divisible by 4, it is also divisible by 2. Converse, if a number is not divisible by 2, how can it be divisible by 4? Are you all with me? If a number is not divisible by 3, how can it be divisible by 6? Are you all with me? That means if you observe anything to the right side of the slash, they are the numbers which are derived from the prime factors less than this number, yes or no? 4 is derived from 2. 6 is derived from 2 and 3. 12 is derived from 2 and 3. Again, I am repeating this point. I kept a slash, where I kept a slash? 12 lies between 9 and 16. I took root 9, which is 3. Root 16, it is 4. I kept a slash. What am I telling is, anything to the right side of root 10, anything to the right side of root N, anything to the right side of root N, all these are derived from the prime factors less than root 10. Yes or no? 4 is derived from 2. 6 is derived from 2 and 3. 12 is derived from 2 and 3. 4 in turn is derived from 2 and 3. That means, how to check whether a number is a prime or composite? Take root N. Do all the, take all the prime factors. Take all the prime factors less than or equal in 2 root N. Take all the prime factors less than or equal in 2N. Why we are taking only less than or equal in 2N? Any root N, anything greater than 2 root N is a multiple of the factors less than root N. If a number is not divisible by 2, how can it be divisible by 4? If a number is not divisible by 3, how can it be divisible by 6? Take all the prime factors less than or equal in 2 root N. Right? If N is not divisible by, if N is not divisible by any prime factors. If N is not divisible by any prime factors less than or equal in 2 root N, then N is a prime number. Then N is a prime number. Then N is a prime number. I will take 2 or 3 examples, then it will be crystal clear. This is just nothing but an English statement. Once we take a mathematical problem, then you will understand it in detail. Now see this example. How to check whether a number 143 is a prime or composite? This is a textbook definition. How to check whether a number is a prime number or a composite number? Now see here. 143 lies between which 2 squares? 12 square and 13 square. 12 square and 13 square. First take it, N, then take root of N. Root of N. Root 143, root 143, sorry. It is 11 and 12. 11 and 12. 11 square is 141, 12 square is 144. It lies between 11 and 12. It lies between 11 and 12. Take all the prime factors less than or equal in 2 root 143. Root 143 is closer to root 144, which is 12. Take all the prime factors. What are all the prime fact, prime numbers? Sorry, prime numbers. Not prime factors, prime numbers. 2, 3, 5, 7 and 11. 2, 3, 5, 7 and 11. Is 143 divisible by 2? No. Is 143 divisible by 3? No. Some of the digits is not divisible by 3. Is 143 divisible by 5? No. Is 143 divisible by 7? No. Is 143 divisible by 11? Yes. 143 is 11 into 13. Therefore, 143, it is a composite number. It is a composite number. I hope the idea it is clear. How to check whether a number is a prime number or a composite number? How to check whether a number is a prime number or a composite number? Step number 1. Find out the nearest squares. 11 square, 121, 12 square, 144. 143 is less than 144, 12. Write all the prime numbers less than or equal in 2. If the given number is a prime number, include that one, otherwise exclude. Why we are taking less than or equal in 2 root N? Anything greater than root N is derived from the numbers less than or equal in 2 root N. I just took the factors to explain the concept. Why greater than root N are derived from the factors less than root N? I hope the idea it is clear. 143, it is a composite number. Check whether 143 is divisible by all prime numbers less than or equal in 2 12. 2 is a prime number, 3 is a prime number, 5 is a prime number, 7 is a prime number, 11 is a prime number. Are you all with me? Right? So, none of them it divides except 11. So 143 is 11 into 13. Therefore, 143 is a composite number. One more example will solve to understand this concept thoroughly. Let me take another example with a different ink. Now see here. Suppose if I take, check whether 667 is a prime or composite? Check whether 667 is a prime or composite? One rule to check whether a number is a prime number or a composite number. Apply square root to the given number. Root of 667. What are the nearest perfect square? 25 square is 625. 26 square is 676. It is just less than 676, which is 26. Write all the prime numbers less than 26. 2, 3, 5, 7, 11, 13, 17, 19, 23. 19, 23. If 667 is not divisible by any of these numbers, then 667 is a prime number, else it is a composite number. 667 not divisible by 2. A reverse will come. 667, 23, 2's are 46, 207, 23, 9's are 207. Therefore, the number is a composite number. Therefore, the number is a composite number. I hope the idea is very clear. One of the rules, what is? First rule, we checked the number, any number greater than even, it is a composite number. What is rule number 2? A power N plus R minus B power N concept. A power N plus R minus B power N concept. What is the third rule? Take the under root of the given number. Take the under root of the given number. Check the nearest perfect square. Write all the prime numbers less than the given value. If the 667 is not divisible by any of the prime numbers less than root N, then the number is a prime number. Why we are taking root N? Any number greater than root N is derived from the numbers less than root N. Anything greater than root N, it is a derived number. Anything less than root N, it is a primitive basic number. So I will work with basic numbers. If a number is not divisible by 2, how can it be divisible by 4? If a number is not divisible by 3, how can it be divisible by 6? I do not need greater than root N. Otherwise, it will be a redundant process. So we will avoid anything greater than root N. To explain that concept, I took a simple example of a factor to tell you that greater than root N, it is not required. Greater than root N, it is not required. It is a prime numbers, prime numbers. I hope the idea it is clear. This is a very smaller number. 3 digit number, you can use this concept. 143, I hope the idea is clear. 667, the idea should also be clear. Idea should also be clear. In case... Sir, what is the demerit of this concept? Now see here. If the question is like this. 27 followed by 5 zeros ending with 1. Will you apply square root? Will you find out the nearest perfect square? Will you write all prime numbers less than? Don't you think it will be a very lengthy process? That is the reason. We will not use that concept to solve a lot of problems. This concept is a good method for a smaller number of digits. As the number of digits are increasing, please write down this concept. Each and every rule has a demerit. As the number of digits increases. As the number of digits increases, complexity increases. As the number of digits increases, complexity increases. Complexity increases. Therefore, this method should not be used. These methods should not be used for numbers with more digits. For numbers with more digits, these logic might not be the best logic. Rule number 1, if it is an even number, right? Greater than 2, it is a composite number. What if it is an odd number? Then rule number 2 came into picture. Check whether the number is of the form A power N plus R minus B power N. What if I am unable to write the number of the form A power N plus R minus B power N? Is 2 power 12 plus 3 power 9? 2 power 12 plus 3 power 9. Prime or composite? This question is based on the concept A power N plus B power N. A power N plus B power N is always divisible by A plus B. A power N plus B power N is always divisible by A plus B if N is an odd number. If N is an odd number. Can I write it like this? 2 power 4 power 3. 3 cube power 3. A power N plus B power N is always divisible by A plus B if N is an odd number. So it is always divisible by 2 power 4 plus 3 power 3. 16 plus 27, 43. If it is a prime number, it should have only 2 factors, 1 and given number. But it is giving me a factor 43. So therefore, the answer for this question is composite number. Answer for this question is composite number. A power N plus B power N is always divisible by A plus B if N is an odd number. 2 power 12 is 2 power 4 power 3 plus 3 cube power 3. 16 power 3 plus 27 power 3. If the power is an odd number, it is always divisible by A plus B. 16 plus 27, 43. Therefore, the number is a composite number. Next one. CAT previous year question. Is 2 power 2007 plus 1? 1 can be written as 1 power 2007. 1 can be written as 1 power 2007. Now see here. A power N plus B power N. A power N plus B power N is always divisible by, is always divisible by A plus B if N is an odd number. A power N plus B power N is always divisible by A plus B if N is an odd number. 2 power 2007 plus 1 power 2007. 2007 is an odd number. So it is divisible by A plus B. 2 plus 1, it is 3. If a number is a prime number, it should have only 2 factors, 1 and the number. But it has got 3 as a factor. Therefore, the answer for this question is, the number is a composite number. The number is a composite number. Idea clear? Another beautiful question sir. Is 27 followed by 5 zeros ending with 1? Prime or composite? Write down one more question. How many factors? How many factors exist for? How many factors exist for 27 followed by 5 zeros ending with 1? How many factors exist for 27 followed by 5 zeros ending with 1? Very, very good question sir. 27 followed by 5 zeros ending with 1? Already we discussed this question. It, this can be written as 27 into 10 power 6 plus 1. Why? Because 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 zeros, 6 zeros ending with 1. 27 into 10 power 6 plus 1. What is the concept we discussed? A power N plus B power N is always divisible by A plus B if N is an odd number. N is an odd number. I am writing the concept for every question so that when you are referring the notes, it should be extremely clear to you. 27 into 10 power 6 plus 1, prime or composite? This can be written as 3 into 10 square whole cube, 1 whole cube. 3 into 10 square whole cube plus 1 whole cube. A power N plus B power N is always divisible by A plus B. A is 3 into 10 square, B is 1. 3 into 10 square plus 1. 3 into 10 square plus 1, which is 301. 301 is 7 into 43. 301 is 7 into 43. If a number is a prime number, it should have only 2 factors, 1 and the given number. But it got factor 7 and 43. Then the number is a composite number. Then the number is a composite number. I hope the idea it is clear. Then the number is a composite number. A power N plus B power N is always divisible by A plus B if N is an odd number. So it is divisible by 7 and 43. Therefore, it is a composite number. Therefore, it is a composite number. I hope the idea it is clear. Now, if I keep the same question into CAT level, the question is, how many factors exist for these number? Now you are telling that this number is a composite number. Now tell me, how many factors exist for these number? Now, this is a very beautiful question. Please put a star mark on this. Keep a star mark on this. How many factors exist for this number? 27 followed by 5 zeros ending with 1. 27 followed by 5 zeros ending with 1. Now see here. Very, very good question sir. 27 followed by 5 zeros ending with 1. This can be written as 27 into 10 power 6 plus 1. 27 into 10 power 6 plus 1. This can be written as A cube plus B cube. 3 into 10 square whole cube plus 1 cube. I hope the idea it is clear. 3 into 10 square whole cube plus 1 cube. A cube plus B cube, this is A plus B. A plus B into A cube plus B cube can be written as A plus B into A square minus AB plus B square. A square minus AB plus B square. This is A square minus AB plus B square. I hope it is clear till here. 301, 301 can be written as 7 into 43. On the left side I wrote. Now see here. Can I write these like this? A square minus AB plus B square. A plus B whole square minus 3AB. Can I write these number like this? A plus B whole square is A square plus B square plus 2AB. Plus 2AB minus 3AB. It is minus AB. So I am writing it like this. 3 into 10 square plus 1 whole square minus 3AB. 3 into A into B. 3 into 3 into 10 square. 7 into 43? This is 300 plus 1. 301 whole square. 3 into 3, 9. 9 into 10 square, 900, which is 30 square, which is 30 square. 7 into 43? 301 minus 30, 271. 301 plus 30, 331. 331. This is the beauty of this question. 743, 271 and 331. 7 is a prime number, we know that. 43 is a prime number, we know that. 231, we will check. So what is the concept? Root of 271? 16 square is 256. 17 square is 289. Root of 289, it is less than 17. So write all the prime numbers less than or equal in 217. 2, 3, 5, 7, 11, 13, 17. 271 divisible by 2? No. 271 divisible by 3? No. 271 divisible by 5? No. 7, 73's are 21, 61? No. 11, some of the odd places minus some of the even places? No. 13, 2's are 26. 11? No. 17, 1's are 17, 101? No. 2, 3, 5, 7, it does not divide. So 271, it is a prime number. That is exactly the question. How the previous concept can help us to solve a CAT question? 271 is a prime number. Similarly, 331, root of 331 is less than root 361, which is 19. What are the prime numbers less than or equal in 219? 2, 3, 5, 7, 11, 13, 17, 19. 331 not divisible by 2? Not divisible by 3? Not divisible by 5? Not divisible by 7? 74's are 28, 51? Not possible. Some of the odd places minus some of the even places. 0 are a multiple, multiple of 11. 11 not possible. 13, 2's are 26. 71 not possible. 17, 1's are 17. 161, 161. 17 not possible. 19, 1's are 19. 141 not possible. 331, it is a prime number. So 7 is a prime number, 43 is a prime number, 271 is a prime number and 331 is a prime number. Answer for this question is 4. How many prime factors exist for this number? Answer will be 4. Very, very good question. It is a foundation level question. The same question... It is a foundation level question, the same question if it is asked in CAT. The question will be asked like this. Twenty-seven followed by five zeros ending with one. Twenty-seven into ten power six plus one. Three into ten square whole cube plus one whole cube. A cube plus B cube can be written as A plus B into A square minus A B plus B square. Three not one is seven into forty-three. A square minus A B plus B square. I wrote it as A plus B whole square minus three A B. Three into ten square plus one whole cube minus three into three into ten square. Nine into ten square can be written as nine hundred which is thirty square. Three not one square minus thirty square. A square minus B square, A minus B into A plus B. Seven is a prime number, forty-three is a prime number, two seventy-one is a prime number and three thirty-one is also a prime number. Three thirty-one is also a prime number. Idea clear? Four concepts, I hope the idea it is clear. Each and every question in the way that I am discussing, write down the same way in your notebook and watch the class and re-watch the class within forty-eight hours. You will be extremely good in each and every subtopic. Subtopic to subtopic, model by model, I will discuss in detail. Probably the finest structure that you have seen in any of the competitive examinations that you are writing with respect to aptitude.